Do we know where Eileen is?
Do we know where Eileen is?
Meeting call to order, please. Please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madame Secretary, roll call, please.
Meeting call to order, please. Please join me in saluting the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we know where Eileen is?
Meeting call to order, please. Please join me in saluting the flag.
Do we know where Eileen is?
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 Meeting call to order, please.
Please join me in saluting the flag.
Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Ms. Chow?
Here.
Ms. Chune?
Here.
Mr. Rossy?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Here. Ms. Martin?
Here.
Seven present.
Three special order business. We have a spotlight on excellence, 2022 Science and Engineering Fair. And I understand we have students here to make the presentation, and please welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have here to introduce our spotlight on excellence, Eileen Sentalman, our Coordinator of Science and Social Studies. Ms. Sentalman, can you share with us and introduce us to tonight's spotlight?
Absolutely. I'd like to be here. We had our Science and Engineering Fair on March 1st. This is done with STEM club advisors that are at every school as an after-school program, where they support the students with pursuing a project of their own design. So it's... Thank you. Appreciate that. So that's one of the things I like the most about this Science and Engineering Fair is that students get to pursue something that they're interested in and use the science and engineering practices to design their own investigation or create their own engineering project. So this year, our fair was a little smaller than usual because the clubs were really ramping up during the Omicron surge, so a lot of kids who were coming down ill ended up dropping out of the clubs. But we really celebrated the students that persevered and made it until the end. The fair was about half the regular size, but we had some amazing projects. So some of you were there that night, and I'm sure appreciated all of the hard work that the students did. We have, there were two first-place winners, one at the middle school level and one at the high school level. I wanted to briefly describe the middle school winner. They weren't able to be here tonight, but the project was incredible. It was from the STEM Academy. There were three students: Sedal Olubadi, Nahiba Zahin, and Manasa Mutheba. They were interested in black holes and why there's a circle of light around black holes. Because we know that black holes absorb with the gravity. They pull in everything around them, so why would there be a ring of light? So they were curious about that and did some research investigating it, figured it out, and then were wondering how they could design a model to use in the classroom that would explain this to other students. So their model had a liquid whirlpool, a light-up disc to represent the ring of light around the black hole, and a laser mounted on the top to fully demonstrate how the gravity bends the light from behind the black hole. So it was incredible. They were a huge hit at the science fair, and they walked away with the shiny trophy, which is now displayed at the STEM Academy. So our first-place winner at the high school level is here with us tonight. And I wanted to first introduce Emily Steinberg, who is our STEM Club Advisor at the high school level. So Ms. Steinberg, why don't you come on up and you can introduce our winner?
So I've been doing science club as the advisor for 21 years at the high school, and that has morphed into the now STEM club. And we've been doing the state science fair for five years, six years now. But this, will I say, was our most successful year. We had six projects at the regional fair, district fair, pardon me. Three of them went on to the regional fair. One of them, Kylie's project, got a first-place prize at the regional fair. She will be then moving on to the state science fair, and we just received notification that she will also be competing at the international science fair, which takes place here in the United States and is unfortunately virtual this year. We thought we were going somewhere, but anyway. So I'll have her come up and explain her project.
As Kylie's coming up, Kylie is also the treasurer on our district-wide Lowell Student Advisory Council, so...
And she has been recently accepted to Harvard's summer pre-college program.
Hello. Okay. My name is Kylie Conlin. I'm a junior at Lowell High. And so my project was basically all about 3D printing and how they're kind of our future. So I decided to create basically a machine that takes plastic water bottles and converts it into the filament that goes into the 3D printer. So you have ink for a regular printer, but you have filament for your 3D printer. So that's why I decided to come up with the ink being water bottles. So I created a whole machine that reduces, reuses, and recycles plastic. Yeah, as a way to upcycle for everyone. And it's also able to be done in your own household and everything. So that's why I converted it to a small scale, so people could also be doing this in their own households. Yeah. So basically, this cuts the actual water bottle. So this is a soda bottle. And it goes into this little heater block, and it actually melts it into this filament that goes into a printer, and it prints stuff out like this. So part of my project's actually 3D-printed. This is 3D-printed. This is 3D-printed, and so is this. So it's all reusing. And this is also part of an old 3D printer head that I made. That's kind of my project.
And while presenting her project, she was wearing earrings that she had made from an old water bottle. So she was really super creative. She came up with it all on her own. And as you can see, created the entire machine on her own. So, yeah.
This is actually something that I created on it. This is one of the earrings. And this is like the whole process. So this is the water bottle, the ribbon that it makes, the filament, and then what it comes out of the printer looking like. And then this is the actual printer I built to go into it and the filament maker. Thank you. Also, say thank you to Ms. Steinberg for all her help, especially like with difficult times with the Omicron virus. She was always making sure that she was there for us, so I really appreciate it.
If I could, Kylie's mother is also here. She's also a teacher in Lowell Public Schools, so... Mom, do you want to stand and be recognized? No, just to just... But we'll recognize you anyway. And, Mr. Mayor, before I yield the microphone, we have a special spotlight on excellence here. Our very own Chris Ferrera was just accepted into Harvard as an undergraduate for next year. So I really, truly do believe that Lowell Public Schools will be the greatest school district in the Commonwealth, and our students will lead the way. So Kylie, Chris, really proud of you and really extraordinarily admire the leadership roles you've taken in the district to pave the way for future generations here in Lowell Public Schools.
Any comment? Any questions? Hearing none, I just want to make a quick comment from up here. Thank you, Ms. Sentalman and Ms. Steinberg, for your wonderful work with the program, with the Science Club. And Kylie, I'm just so impressed with your project, and I just love the title, Printing for Future. So that's perfect, and it is going to be the future. So, you know, you have the creativity and the technicality just to make it happen. So congratulations to you and to your mom as well. And also want to congratulate Chris on your acceptance to Harvard. Now you're going to be a Harvard man, as they will call you, right? The Harvard man, so congratulations. Thank you, everyone, for being here and showcasing the excellence in science, and Lowell is very... Lowell Public School and the City of Lowell is very lucky to have students like both of you and all the other students that are very successful. Thank you. We now go to the next agenda item, four minutes. Four point one, I need a motion to approve the regularly scheduled meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of March sixteen, twenty twenty-two, and placed up on file by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Chuen. On favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carry. We go to five. Permission to enter April six, twenty twenty-two. Need a motion to approve permission to enter by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Doherty, on favor say aye. Roll call, please, on this one.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chuen? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
We now go to six memorials. Margaret Peg Lally, a retired Lowell High School paraprofessional. Madam Secretary, please dim the light. We now go to the portion of the motion, seven point one. Ms. Doherty requests the superintendent provide the committee with a report on what each middle school offers a student with the enhancement intervention programming, including type of instruction, number of students involved by grade, and when it is scheduled, such as before, after school, during homeroom, like arts or other time block. Second by Ms. Thompson. I understand we do have a registered speaker. Ms. Doherty, would you like the speaker to go first?
Yes, please.
Lily Ross? You have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Lily Ross, and I'm an eighth grader at the James S. Daley Middle School. I'm here tonight to speak in support of Jackie Doherty's motion to research the intervention in allied arts schedules middle schools are currently using. I think this is important because right now at our school, there are students who cannot attend allied arts classes because their reading and math interventions scheduled at the same time. They go to their allied art... I mean, to their intervention classes where they often do computer work that makes them feel fatigued and unproductive. Not to mention, these classes go for one to two hours at a time, so try to imagine the eye strain these poor students are experiencing. They do not have the chance to do creative exercises like music or visual arts, and they do not get to take tech ed or computer classes to enhance their knowledge of being safe on the internet, a skill much needed in today's modern world of technology. Most concerningly, they are not able to attend SEL or social emotional learning classes to learn strategies for managing their mental health. Being deprived of their social emotional learning class, the arts and technology is negatively impacting these students' educational experience and mental well-being. The motion put forth tonight will allow the school committee to examine different schedules schools are using to balance intervention in allied arts and perhaps find a better schedule that schools all across the district can use. Maybe the homeroom advisory time can be adapted to accommodate intervention classes or social emotional learning classes, which would then give students the time to attend allied arts with their peers. The pandemic caused a devastatingly negative impact on students' mental health, and having a scheduled time that puts more mental health supports in place will benefit students, thus improving their overall academic performance, since people work better when they feel better. For some intervention students, arts and technology are where they shine most with their skills. It is unfair that they lose out on the opportunity to develop their strengths. When students are stressed or made to feel like failures, they're less likely to attend school because it's painful for them. We are simply trying to make schools a safer and non-toxic environment for students to learn and grow. Please support Ms. Doherty's motion to get a report on the intervention schedules all schools are using, so we can find a better solution and provide all students with access to allied arts so they can fully embrace themselves and flourish with the help of Lowell Public Schools. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me.
Ms. Doherty?
I thank you, Your Honor. So this motion really came before me from a group of students at the Daley School who are doing their civics project around mental health services in our schools, which I think my colleagues know has been an area of concern for me. With the interventions, the enhancements, it's especially important that we take a look at what we're doing. It's one of the, you know, the areas. We know there's been a lot of student loss across the district because of the pandemic. I also understand the time restraints on our middle schools. On every school day, there are time restraints. But I thought that this was a fair way. Let's just take a look at the middle schools to start. And I'm including intervention and enhancement, because I know the enhancement is we want to push you to the next level, which is also important. The intervention is we see you're falling behind, and we want to help you catch up. So I very much look forward to getting this report and being able to do a deeper dive into how we are delivering those kinds of services to our students. Thank you.
Ms. Thompson?
I support this motion. I think it's really important, and I want to thank the speaker. I know it's challenging to do that, to come up and speak, so thank you for that. You know, I love that she said, "When we feel better, we work better," and I think that that is a very accurate assessment. There's a lot that's heavy that's going on that our students are dealing with, and I think it's imperative that we make sure that they feel supported and they have an outlet and feel that there's some measure of light. So thank you for speaking, and I absolutely support this motion.
No other comment, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. Seven point two, Ms. Doherty requests the superintendent clarify when a vote was taken to hold off on the spending of funds set aside for facility upgrades. Second by Ms. Mon. Ms. Doherty?
I thank you, and I want to thank the superintendent. He provided us in our packet with the minutes from the October twenty meeting, when there was a vote discussing the... Our investment, our... That we were... In terms of facilities, and if I could, I'd just like to read that motion that passed on the meeting of October twenty. It was by Dominic Lay and Andy Dakota, "Request the mayor to provide the school committee with an update on city council's planned investment in capital project at school facilities over the course of the current fiscal year and the next two fiscal years beyond the current implanted slate of MSBA applications and the school committee's earmarked ESER funds to enable the committee to more effectively plan for the allocation of ESER funds." My understanding of that was we were asking to meet with the city to talk about how we're going to jointly do the repairs that we need, specifically focused on HVAC, because that's been one of the primary concerns of the committee. At no time did I think we were voting not to spend the money, so I was surprised when I happened to be watching the city council meeting last week to hear city manager Eileen Donahue tell me... Tell us, or the council, that the superintendent had said there is no money for that. I know that we also filed our ESER plans with DESI. It's still on the website that we have earmarked this funding, and I just want to be clear to the community and to the council that we are very much committed to working with the city. From my perspective, and I'm speaking for myself here, I'm looking for a fair... You know, let's work together on this, and I don't remember the exact... I want to say it was like fourteen point seven or fourteen point eight, but let's round it up to fifteen million. If the two bodies commit fifteen million dollars to the maintenance of our buildings and with the focus on what makes them safe, what makes them function, like HVAC, you can't have school if the temperature in the room is fifty or ninety. These are essential things that we see a lot of other communities are recognizing. This one-time money should be invested in. So although we are not the owners of the buildings, we are the tenants, we are all in the city. So I would like to just say that going forward, that is the correct information for the city council, that we have earmarked this funding, we have not changed that decision. But we are expecting to work with the city and that they will match our contribution, and together we will make some unprecedented improvements that I believe is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. And that's all I'll say about that. Thank you.
Any other comment? Thank you for... Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much. Really only to echo what my colleague has said, because, you know, I do think that as we look at our ESER funding, we have certainly still remaining a lot of needs in terms of needing to kind of come back from the pandemic and all the challenges that that put in front of the district and, most importantly, put in front of our students and our teachers. But I do absolutely agree that this is a once-in-a-lifetime kind of funding opportunity, and one-time funds really should be spent on one-time expenses. And I agree that if we're looking at a fifteen million dollar investment from the school side and a fifteen million dollar investment from the city side, it is absolutely, I think, a one-time chance to make some extraordinary investments in our... the physical plant of our schools. And I couldn't agree more that this is something that collectively the council and the school committee need to work together to make this happen. And it's one of those rare opportunities when we can really collectively work together and be able to affect a change that will have an impact for the next, you know, fifteen years. So just by way of saying that, I obviously support this... The motion. And I'm really looking forward to the opportunity to work together with the council to craft something that I think will really benefit our students and our school staff incredibly in the next few years. Thanks.
Ms. Doherty?
Sorry, I forgot to add one thing. We have scheduled that meeting. The City Council Facility Subcommittee and the School Committee Facility Subcommittee will be meeting next Tuesday in these chambers at five o'clock. That is a meeting open to the public as well as, obviously, the subcommittee members, but I did want to say that, because we are moving forward with that. Thank you.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I understood that motion that I put with Mr. Dakota back then, it was to hold off any commitment from us until what we can see what the city can provide, can put into. So it's not a commitment. I think that's something that we want to... We want to work with, but we want to see what the city has to offer. So that's how I understand. Thank you.
Any other comment? Good motion, Ms. Doherty, and I appreciate all your comments and the best foot forward and efforts to work with the city to resolve this matter. And I was also going to comment about the subcommittee meeting that I know that the chair of the facility on the council side been rescheduling, so it's going to be... I'm happy to hear it's going to be next Tuesday. Thank you for the information. No other comment, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. The motion's carry. Seven point three, Mr. Lay asks superintendent for a report on After Dark Program at the high school. Do we have favorable response and what I'll be planning to do in the future? Second by Mr. Rossi. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of years ago, when I put a motion to give students at Lowell High the opportunity to take some vocational courses at the Greater Lowell Tech. And that's... As a result, our curriculum director created a program called After Dark Program where the students can leave the Lowell High School... They can leave Lowell High School and and go to take courses at the Greater Lowell Tech. And I just want to know, have that program been prospered? Have... Do we have good response from the community? And whether that is something that we should continue to do? Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, maybe Ms...
Through Mr. Superintendent, would you staff like to make a comment at this point or wait for the... Make a report to come back?
I think it would be probably most beneficial for us to provide a report back under the standard protocol.
Ms. Desmond, do you want to... No, thank you. All right, that's fine.
Any other comment on this? Seeing no hands, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it. Motion's carry. Seven point four, Mr. Lay asks superintendent for a feasibility study for having STEM program at Lowell High School, second by Ms. Chuen. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. The STEM program, I think, I believe in STEM program, so I thought that among many other... A lot of people would think that that would benefit our students, that serve our students really well. So this is something that I hope that we can provide to our students. And if you may, the motion speaks for itself, if we can find some way to adopt the STEM program at Lowell High.
The ayes have it. The motion's carry. Motion seven point five, Mr. Lay requests the superintendent collaborate with the president of the United Teachers of Lowell to form an ad hoc task force of qualified local experts in fields relevant to school facility safety, standards and maintenance to, one, review all facility needs across the district, two, inventory historic attempts to remedy the issues, and, three, build a strong range plan... a long-range plan for improvement, including recommended funding, vehicles, and ongoing monitoring protocols to ensure that every school in Lowell meets the community's high standard for students now and into the future. Regular status reports shall be submitted to the school committee on a monthly basis in public session, outlining the progress of the task force until completion of the project. Second by Ms. Thompson. That's a detailed motion, Mr. Lay, that should speak for itself.
It speaks for itself, Mr. Mayor.
On favor say aye, Ms. Mon? I'm sorry, Ms. Doherty. I got my names mixed up today. I apologize.
No, that's okay. Sorry, I just have a quick question. Is there a cost associated with this? It seems like quite an extensive study.
I don't expect it to have a cost to it. So I think that this is something that we've been talking about facility for so long. We've been talking and talking, and we do not have any concrete plan how to deal with it, and also we don't have planned what to do in the future. So I hope that this motion would address that issue, that we're going to do it. We're not just keep on talking.
Ms. Thompson?
I believe this motion actually speaks...
I, I believe this motion actually speaks to one of the motions I had made prior about HVAC and having information about that ongoing. I think that this, knowing that the, that there is going to be a combined effort between the city side and, and us with facilities, potentially this is something that can be discussed during that time. So I make a motion to bring it to the joint meeting of the facilities committees.
Okay, motion by Ms. Thompson to bring it to the subcommittee.
I, I object to that. Why do we need to bring it to the subcommittee, Ms. Thompson?
I was saying that we bring to the subcommittees because it's an opportunity for us to discuss what the city has been doing, because they are the ones who have been dealing with a lot of the facility issues. So at least you'll have an idea of what they are indeed doing and then we can then make our, our moves or the decisions thereafter.
Okay, I agree. But I prefer that we agree on it on the floor here tonight before we bring it over, So I, I prefer that we agree on this and then you can bring it to the subcommittee. Agree? Okay.
Do, Ms. Thompson, do you want to still put your motion on the floor to have a second or are you going to withdraw?
I mean, I think that the purpose of me bring it to the facility subcommittee was to basically get the information that, that Mr. Lee is asking for so that then we can make the, so we can know what they're doing and then based on what they are or are not doing, then we can decide what, what our next steps are. Because again, as he mentioned, there's been a lot of conversation about it. Now, if we actually know what's been happening, then we can make our actual choices and our decisions moving forward. But I will defer to the maker of the original motion.
Okay, so you would, it sounds to me, Mr. Lee, do you, if you, you can make a motion on the floor, Ms. Thompson, and somebody can second, or Mr. Lee either, you know. Yeah, so Ms. Morn, you?
Yeah, I would just say, so I think we just need to vote on, on Mr. Lee's motion and then entertain Stacy's. So we approve it here and then we can, yeah.
Sure, yeah, I believe the motion by Mr. Lee will get passed and then after that we're going to take on Ms. Thompson. Okay, all in favor of Mr. Lee's motion, say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, the motion is carry. Now the motion by Ms. Thompson, anyone seconding it? Second by Ms. Morn. Hearing the, the disagreement on it, could ask for a roll call for Ms. Thompson's motion, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
So just to be clear, Mr. Lee, there will be a report provided in response to your motion and further after that we'll follow with the subcommittee meeting discussion on this topic. We now go to 7.6. Mr. Lee asks superintendent for a feasibility study for providing a vocational program and information technology located inside Lowell High School with some example courses including but not limited to cybersecurity, web development, graphic design, networking, et cetera, that are approved by DESI and also are not in conflict with the Greater Lowell Vocational School, second by Ms. Doherty. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Similarly to the after dark program, I had, I spoke earlier, is that IT courses could be maybe not too expensive to have because it does not require big equipments and, and it is something that our students may find it educational at the high school. So as long as it does not conflict with the program at the Greater Lowell Technical High School, I think, I, I think that we, I want to find the way if we can have it at the high school.
Any other comment? Hearing none, on the face of the aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, the motion is carry. 7.7, Ms. Morn requests an update on the current status of our principal evaluation completions and contract cycles, including any anticipated vacancies for the upcoming school year, second by Ms. Doherty. Ms. Morn?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm really just looking for kind of a tally to see where are the, the group of our principals, where they are in their evaluation cycle and, and also to be able to get a handle on what we may be looking for in terms of vacancies coming next year. I think, you know, this is really coming from a place of recognizing the talent we have in our, in our principals in the district, wanting to ensure that we're hanging on to highly talented people in this role and just trying to get a handle on exactly where we are in terms of the, you know, formative and summative evaluation process that all of our principals go through. So again, not looking for anything insane, you know, really just a tally. So you can kind of, the, the committee can get a sense of where each principal is in their, their process and then any information you have about, again, you know, what we're looking at for the, for vacancies for next year. Also, just to be clear, not looking for names, you know, just positions and, and, you know, the title so we can get a sense of the, the district as a whole. Thank you.
Seeing no other hands, on the face of the aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, the motion is carry. 7.8, Mr. Rossi requests superintendent to provide report in regards to staffing delegations. I'm sorry. On 7.8 here, I see, I got the wrong one. All right, I got the, the wrong page there. So it's the same motion but by a different committee member, correct? Okay, so 7.8 is Ms. Doherty requires superintendent to provide report in regards to staffing delegations for technology departments, second by Mr. Lee. Ms. Doherty? 7.8. There's 7.8 is Jackie Doherty. And then I got 7.8 here is, okay. All right. I guess, um, the next one's the right one?
This is the right one, this is right off the website.
It's just the Rossi. But even 7.8, it's 7.8, Mr. Rossi, are you, Mr. Rossi, are you the one asking the superintendent to report the staffing delegations for technology department? Is that you?
Yeah, but I think what they're saying is, did you see the model?
That's 7.9.
The 7.9 is the unanswered motion. Are you, are you 7.9? Okay. So I'm on 7.8. Am I on the, the right page with?
Yes.
Okay. You are 7.8?
Yes.
But the numbers here on the pages, it just, it's back and forth. The 7.8 has Mr. Rossi and 7.9 has you. So, so, all right, so I'm not quite sure what's going on with this printed agenda here. So I'm going to go.
So yeah, that was mine.
I use, I use, I use, I use 7.8?
She's 7.9.
Okay, I'm going to go with the voice for, I'm going to go with my paper because I'm going to 7.8 regardless of what the number is. So you're going to go, on my sheet, it's going to be 7.8, which is going to be you. Okay?
Here it is.
Okay, and second by Ms. Chun, motion speaks by, for itself, on the face of the aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, the motion is carry. Now we go to the 7.9, it showed up on 7.8, Ms. Ms. Doherty. 7.9, Ms. Doherty have a third party audit around mental health services to our students. This was an unanswered motion, so it does not need to be second. Ms. Doherty?
I thank you, Your Honor. I would like to say I did see in the packet today, you know, this week, a report by Ms. Desmond regarding mental health services to our student. That does not meet the requirements of this motion, which was put forward on December 1st, three months ago. It had a, to me, a very urgent time factor because we're making decisions around budgeting. We had previously, as Ms. Desmond mentions in her report, we had voted, I believe, 28 new social worker positions across the district. We recently in March voted to post for a director of mental health behavior, but all this is, it's over $2 million in investing in mental health services, but without the third party audit, I just am not confident that we have the full picture of we're doing the best we can to deliver mental health services to our students when we all know this is a critical time worldwide. It's not just Lowell, it's not just this country that many people are anxious due to the pandemic and a lot of other issues. So through you, Your Honor, to Dr. Boyd, I would like to ask why the motion asking for a third party audit on December 1st was not answered?
Ms. Doherty, I will ask Mr. Superintendent to respond, but because of the mix up in numbers back and forth, just shown to me that we have two registered speaker on, on your motion as well. Would you like the speaker to go first before Mr. Superintendent answer your question or you want your question asked first?
That's fine. We can let the speakers talk first.
Madam Secretary, would you call the registered speaker to come up to the podium, please?
7, Erica Lang? Well, this is 7.9, it might be Eileen's, I'm not sure.
As I stand here today, I'm accompanied by nothing more than a few friends and some notes written 10 minutes ago on a friend's phone. I am free balling this speech, so please bear with me. My name is Erica Lang and I'm currently an eighth grade student president residing at the James S. Daly Middle School. I'm speaking in solidarity of Jackie Doherty's motion regarding third-party input on mental services provided. I firmly believe that this is of significant importance as it will ensure the utmost quality of mental health services provided. In the recent century, mental health needs have been increasingly in demand. While this can be accounted for a variety of reasons, the recent COVID-19 outbreak can attribute to many. However, emotional support has declined. If the district has been granted a large sum of money, why is there a singular social worker for 700 students? If we need more, why are we given less? As someone who is at risk, I plead on behalf of countless students and LPS's care for more support. Personally, schooling becomes extremely treacherous when overcoming emotional distress. Mental health is the defining factor of students' performance throughout the day. It is our first line of defense in combating everything related to academics. On top of this, unbiased judgment allows additional insight formerly unbeknownst. A different point of view prevents many shortcomings of the current system in place. Professionals have the ability to see the quote unquote "big picture." This entity allows priorities to be set straight that can identify what's not and what's needed. To conclude, mental health is as important as physical health. I'd like to thank everyone for their time in offering, offering me a stage to express my concerns. Please support Jackie Doherty's motion as countless students support her journey in providing adequate care.
Thank you. Kayleen Bowie?
I'm Kayleen Bowie. I'm 14 years old and I'm also a student from the James S. Daly Middle School. A lot of what I'm saying is going to, also reflects from what Erica also said. I'm here to talk about Jackie Doherty's unanswered motion about having a third-party company audit around mental health services to students. I believe it is important to acknowledge how crucial it is for teens to have mental health support, especially during times like these where there is a growing rate of mental health, mental illnesses and a lack of social workers and therapists available for students at school. These issues are also accompanied by limited access to social, emotional learning curriculums in classrooms. I can personally relate to how hard it is to access mental health resources. I have struggled with mental health and can vouch for how much it can affect one academic life. The district has been granted money to be used to invest in mental health services. It is important that the money is used in ways that can best benefit and support the district's diverse student population. This mean, this means we can, we need to determine a smarter way to spend our money on mental health services. The best way for us to do this is to have a third-party company look at what we already have and see what's not working well. They can use that information to see what could benefit schools and students the most and prioritize those areas of high concern, along, along with what methods are most effective and impactful to those concerns so they can be improved. Having an unbiased third-party look at our schools will help us get a bigger picture of what we can do to, to, to help with those concerns. It's an extremely important issue and we cannot rush and make foolish investments. Having a third-party look at Lowell Public Schools and its students will ensure that we will have a help, we will have helpful mental health services in place. Mental health matters and we need to prioritize this. If we can accomplish this issue, we can create more supportive and nurturing school environments for everyone. Thank you for your time and please support this motion by Jackie Doherty.
Thank you so much for the student speakers. Just to be clear, this motion, I might have said it didn't, unanswered motion, but it was seconded by Mr. Lee. And so we continue with your question earlier. If you could repeat your question to Mr. Superintendent, go from there.
I, I think this, this motion was timely and very important. It's still very important, but now we've lost three months. So I'd like Dr. Boyd to answer why he has not moved on this motion.
So as you and I discussed via text message previously, this was a floor motion that was put out of sequence within the school committee's agenda on, at the beginning of December. So it wasn't within the motion item. It was done during a separate item where it was added as a floor motion. That took some time for discovery. That also was in December, prior to the holidays, prior to the January Omicron surge, and here we are in March. But I do appreciate you resurfacing it and reminding me that it was a floor motion. We did uncover that floor motion and we made an attempt to respond to that tonight. So you do have a response? I hear from you it's unsatisfactory. We'll take another look at it and review it again.
I'm not getting into back and forth. I just want to conclude with I expect an RFP from a reputable source that will conduct a third-party audit of our mental health services delivery. That was the motion. Any kind of internal review is not going to meet those requirements. As the mayor knows, I have mentioned this issue about this motion to you on the floor in texts. It's been multiple opportunities to tell you that where is the motion? It was dropped from the quarterly review in January. I called the next day about that. We need to move forward. If, if you're not happy with a motion, you don't get to ignore it. You have to follow the, the majority of what the school committee requested was a third-party audit. We have wasted three months and we need to move forward with this immediately. Thank you.
No other comment? All in favor, Ms. Morn?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to, to say too, I mean, the timeliness of this really is, I think, of the utmost importance. Budget conversations are already going on in the district and I think, you know, certainly we're, we're working very hard to include students and parents and, and all of our other stakeholders in this, in these budget conversations. But at the end of the day, we're responsible for spending every dollar of, of, you know, kind of school-related resources and having a true and authentic understanding of what we have been able to implement so far really is and should be guiding how we determine our budget choices moving forward. So, you know, I would simply echo that time is of the utmost importance right now and getting this accomplished really needs to be given a top priority. And I am really hoping that the turnaround time on this is extremely small so that we really can have the information when it's helpful. Because getting this report in May or June, I mean, unfortunately, decisions are already made, the die is already cast. So just trying to add on my urgency and hoping to get this information as soon as possible.
Ms. Thompson?
I'd first like to say thank you again to our speakers, really important, and I appreciate your vulnerability and sharing what you did. It's going to help other people, so thank you for that. As far as the motion, you know, really important for two reasons, and I think a lot of us have had conversations about mental health and, and the importance of moving it forward and social, emotional learning curriculum and the importance of that and it being fully supported. This obviously hits us at budget season as to what Ms. Martin just spoke to. We need to move on it quickly, not just because it's budget season and, you know, there are decisions that need to be made just for, you know, to have this information back, but also for staffing needs. And so it's a dual kind of a hit that we really need to. And then whatever support there need to be done for the curriculum of social, emotional learning. So there's so much that goes into this, so the quicker we could get this back and be able to support our students, the better.
Any other comment? Just quickly, I also want to say thank you to Kayleen Bowie for the letter that was sent to me regarding a different self-engagement topic on homelessness. So thank you so much for So thank you so much for that. Here are the other comments on this motion. On favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it. Motion is carry. We are now back on track on the right order of the motion numbers. 7.10, Mr. Rossi requests superintendent to provide a line-item budget from Moonies, so committee can have clear understanding of budget. Second by Mr. Lay. Mr. Rossi? Thank you for that. On favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it. Motion is carry. Motion 7.11, Mr. Rossi requests the superintendent to give a report on the printers at the STEM Academy. What has been done to fix this issue? Four weeks of no working printers. Second by Ms. Mon. Mr. Rossi?
And now I'm here to apply. The little.
No other comments? Any other comments?
I just, the, for the younger kids, that's their only way of being able to learn, and they need that content. And I, I don't know what the deal is I, with getting it fixed, but it seems like everything's a very long process, and it's the students that are at the end of this. And that's a concern to me, because they deserve papers to color on and, you know, activities to do. So I think that's something that needs immediate attention, no matter how it gets done. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing no hands on favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it. Motion is carry. 7.11, Mr. Rossi requests the superintendent to give a report. I just read that. We go to 7.12, Mr. Rossi requests the superintendent to help coordinate the appropriate community resources to help our next-generation civics project take their hard work to the next level in the community. Second by Ms. Thompson. Mr. Rossi?
Yes, the Civics Next Generation Program was an amazing event that was put on on Monday, and our middle school students did an incredible job, and they really wanted to take it to the next step with all their projects: homelessness, pollution, drug abuse, mental illness. It, it was really moving to see how passionate they got. So I'd just like as much help as possible in getting them involved further with their next step to see their project come to life for them. Thank you.
Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much. You know, shortly, could not agree more, I mean, with this motion. Having, you know, shared with Mr. Rossi and other, I know a lot of other people here were able to attend the Civics Fair, and I was simply extraordinary. I thought the students were inspiring, and I agree, the, the work that they did really was incredibly impressive around a lot of issues that all of us sitting here as grown-ups have a real hard problem with. So I mean, it was really a very impressive showing of, of innovation and creativity and commitment from all these students. And I definitely say, I mean, this is a, is, Next Generation, I think, has had a great impact on our district, both at the middle school and the high school level. Then they've had, you know, obviously, between the last two years and other things, it's a, they face new challenges. But in terms of this motion, I think the opportunity for the, the, these students to be able to connect with, whether it's school committee members, or counselors, or our delegation, or any other kind of, you know, or civics-minded grown-ups, I think, who would be really very lucky to have the opportunity to work with these students. So anything we could do to help facilitate that, I'm a big fan. Great motion.
Any other comment? That is a great motion, it's a great comment by Ms. Mon. I had the opportunity to attend the Civics Project Fair as well. I was repressed by all the topics, all the issues they brought up forth. I learned a lot. I think I learned more from them than in my short tenure here as mayor. So it was a good learning experience for me. On favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it. Motion is carry. We now go to the subcommittees. 8.1, Facilities and Transportation Subcommittee. Any report? Ms. Doughty?
Thank you, Ronny. Yes, the Facilities and Transportation Subcommittee met on March 14th. Subcommittee members present included myself, Ms. Del Rossi, and Mr. Lay. School committee members also present were Mr. Dakota. And the school department personnel included Dr. Hall and Mr. Underwood, who is our facilities director. Much of the, the meeting was focused on what are some of the priority things that we have accomplished? What are some of the things that we're still looking to do, which I'm hoping that if Mr. Underwood is watching right now, that he's preparing an updated list for us for our joint meeting with the city council next week. Because I think as we work together, it's going to be important that we're very clear about what are the priority things we need to do for our buildings and the timeline for doing them. We talked about things like that the RFP, we had, I think it sits over on the city side. The heating is not a wish, but it's a requirement. The HVAC report that has not moved forward with getting somebody to come in and do an updated assessment of what our HVAC needs are per building. And I believe it was Ms. Del Rossi who made a motion to consider the Collins Report as well as the HVAC RFP assessment, which was seconded by Mr. Lay, and to move forward with getting that assessment that's been sitting over at City Hall. I think, and maybe Dr. Hall has some clarification on this, but I think we had approved paying for that. We had talked about paying for that assessment, and then it didn't move forward. So we are, make, the Facility Subcommittee is making that motion now to, as a, as a body, approve moving forward with this HVAC assessment, so that we can really, as Mr. Underwood said at the meeting, we know what some of the top priority things are that we could get started on. But just like with the third-party audit of our mental health services to have, somebody come in with the expertise and really do a complete review, and then give us a line-by-line of what needs to be done, that's going to be very helpful as the council and the school committee work together on these facility improvements. So I would make that in the form of a motion from the Facility Subcommittee. It was unanimous to move that forward.
Okay, so motion by Ms. Doughty, second by Ms. Mon. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson? Yes. Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay. Any other more comment on the Subcommittee report?
That would just be a report of progress.
Okay. Another report, because you need a motion to accept the Facilities and the Transportation Subcommittee report as a report of progress by Mr. Rossi, second by Mr. Lay. On favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it. Motion is carry. We now go to 8.2, the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee meeting. We need, uh, as a, somebody might want to report on that?
I would actually make a motion that we table this until our next meeting, when we have the written minutes for the, to share with the committee.
Okay. Motion to table up by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Doughty. On favors, I oppose, say no, the eyes have it. Motion is carry. Okay, we now go to nine reports of the superintendent. We have, we're just going to leave it to your time management, Mr. Superintendent. We have 9.1 is the budget update. 9.2, report on motions. 9.2.1, response to those motion. 9.2.2, response to motion 1707, COO 31621 and 11922 by Ms. Mon regarding AMAC report. I think there's a lot, so we'll go one by one. We start with 9.1, budget update. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mayor. We are moving towards the final phases of our budget development. We've been engaging in community forums, conversations with students, staff, and families as we build our budget towards a recommendation for the school committee. All of our schools have completed their school site council work and have presented their school-based budgets. We will be prepared and ready to provide a balanced budget to this committee that provides a financial plan for our educational plan at the conclusion of this month in anticipation of the school committee's deliberation in May. With a brief update, Ms. Turner will share with you the specifics since our last meeting, and then we will carry forward for any questions that the committee may have. Ms. Turner?
So we just today will conclude the budget landscape and revenue and how any changes impact the whole revenue. We have to look at the funding, the community budget, that we can do more out because of that, and then what our next steps are. So this first slide is showing you how we have decided to use the accurate records last year, which includes all funding source, except for the general fund and going to the kind of boards and stuff. And then it has a certain purpose.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I thought that was pretty loud. All right, so as I was saying, this is a total budget landscape at the direction of the school committee last year. You asked to see the ESAR and, um, ESAR and general fund put together, so we've been putting grants, general fund, and ESAR together, showing you here that any one change of this total pie impacts the rest of it. For instance, the city, we did get a letter from the city that we typically get at the beginning of February indicating how much city cash we will receive. We did receive that, I believe, at the end, last week, it was the end of March, March 30th, and it did inform us that we were going to get $3 million less in city cash. Now, because the city cash and the Chapter 70 are on one line, it's called a single-line appropriation on the city council budget, it may look like they only increased our budget because it's still going up by $19 million, but that is all Chapter 70 money. So the state aid increased by $22 million, the city aid decreased by $3 million. That actually impacted us with $5.9 million, because when we received the notice that the city required contribution would go up by $2.9 million, we were planning accordingly, thinking we were going to get the $2.9 million. So once we received notice that the cash went from $15.7 to $12.7 million, that we had to readjust our plans. And as you know, most of our available funds now, we're trying to pour into the Fair Student Fund, and we did not want to impact the schools and try to reverse anything that we already offered the schools. I also want to point out that at the direction of Ms. Lay, I did go and look up what the past net school spending amount was annually, and we, in FY 1617, 45% of the required minimum contribution for the city was given to us in cash, and it has decreased to now 22% of the required minimum contribution. So as the required minimum contribution increases every year, the cash amount is decreasing. Just a point, they do have to meet the required minimum contribution, so even if they cut the cash, they will spend it in other ways to support the district, but it won't be directly in our budget. So just as, like I said, to summarize this slide, anything we do, any one of these changes impacts the overall. We had a total forecasted revenue of $262 million when we first shared with you, and now it's down to $259. This slide is just showing you how much more did we invest in Fair Student Funding. As you can see, the first year, we had $146 million. That was prior to the ESAR money. This is what you approved last year. And then now we're up to 150, I can't even see my own writing, $159 million. The next slide is just showing you, and I wanted to say this to you so that if you ever hear from schools, one thing we're trying to do is improve. The Fair Student Funding is meant to be as transparent, equitable, and stable as possible. So one of the things we realized is, last year, on their funding source summary, the school would see a Fair Student Funding pool amount, then they would see Title I and ESAR. And that gets very confusing, because they might call their additional interventionist ESAR-funded. When I didn't put that on the ESAR grant, I put social workers on the grant. So what I realized is, they're not the one, they don't understand what's going on the grant, so we shouldn't confuse anyone with that knowledge. So this year, we gave them a bucket of money, and I will be the one that goes in and says, okay, this is eligible for ESAR, this is eligible for Title I. They still got the money, so if they say, if you have anyone that's concerned, thinking we didn't get Title I dollars or ESAR dollars this year, they did indeed get those dollars. We did a side-by-side comparison that you will see in the funding source summaries that you'll get in your budget binders, that if they got $5 million last year, and that included Title I, this year they got more than $5 million. It just doesn't show it as Title I anymore. This slide is just showing you how we funded them. 93% through the Fair Student Funding dollars, 5% through supplements, and the other 2% were positions that we fund outside of Fair Student Funding. The next slide is just giving you a more detailed explanation of what I just showed you. The left-hand bar, the bar chart shows you that overall, we've increased significantly for like $13 million, but it shows you that last year, we actually defined it as $4.5 million of Title I, $2 million of ESAR. This year, they don't have anything under those buckets. They still saw the significant increase, but we don't want to cause the confusion. So from here on out, we'll give them a bucket of money, and we'll decide what, it's good fund management. We'll figure out which ones make the best sense to go on the grants. The next slide is just giving you a summary so far of what we've done. It shows that we've done 97% through equity, like with the wakes, 2% for stability, so that schools don't see large swings, and 1% for baseline, or if I'm saying it, it's actually 2% for baseline and 1% for transition. The bottom graph just shows you the type of wakes and what, how much we invested in each. And I'll point one example out. Actually, I can just say it, it's right there. All of the increased investments that we did are fed into this graph. Homeless wakes increased, increased by over $1 million. We're now putting $2 million into the schools for homeless wakes. ELL investments were over $2.5 million. Economically disadvantaged, we had an additional investment of $2.5 million. The special ed investments increased by over $2 million. Low-performance weight cost us $2.3 million. Mental health supplements, we invested $3 million. Behavior support supplements, $2.4 million. Building sub-supports, $1.5 million. Renaissance supplements that you directed us to give last year, we kept that and maintained that. That's $1.4 million. This next slide is just to show you that we truly are trying to get a community vetted budget. We, I believe one of the school committee members asked last year if Zoom was sufficient. So what we did this year is we do the Zoom presentations. We've done a couple to school site councils, to the community. But what we have done is, we have 40 principals who, I'm sorry, 28 principals who met with their school site councils, bring back all that information to us through the budget collaboration process. In addition, we've gone to all of the major schools, the small schools, we're combining into one location. So we've had 25 different in-person budget presentations at the schools. This is the first year, so we don't get significant turnout. Some, we've had maybe 20, and then others we have down as low as three or four, but we still do the presentation so that we can truthfully say we gave everyone the opportunity to hear about our budget and what our priorities are, and to give them the chance to offer feedback. We also offer the survey to the entire school, even if they could not make it to the presentation, they may still want to offer feedback through the survey. We also have three people from the business office attend these sessions with the superintendent, the CSO, and myself. We all go and, we divide and conquer. We each take a school each day of these last couple of weeks, but we bring a note taker with us, so they can take down all of the notes that are, you know, they have great points. A lot of the people have great points, and we don't want to lose it, even if we don't get to do what they say. We emphasize at each of these meetings that we can do anything but not everything, because we don't want someone that had an isolated request feel like they weren't heard. Of course, they were heard. So what we'll do for you is summarize all of the points that were brought up during these sessions, and if we were able to address it and include it in our budget. We also are doing two in-person parent presentations at different locations in the city. One was at the Robinson yesterday. One was at the Robinson yesterday, and one is tomorrow at the Stocklosa. So, like I said, student input is the last of the community vetted informational sessions we'll get. We did have students participate in the Lowell-High session, and she gave great advice to the superintendent, letting us know that we should tweak it a little for the students, so she's working, the superintendent asked her to work with one of our business office staff to make it more student-friendly. Anyway, the two images to the right are just examples of questions asked on the survey and how the answers are tracked and summarized. So, at the end of it all, we can give you a total report on all of the survey input and how many people answered each, and what their, what the majority ruled. And, the next one, I don't need to go through it, but it's showing you that all of the January, February, and March tasks have been completed. We're currently doing the March through April, which is, the schools finished presenting their budgets to us. Now, I'm trying to balance and get it all combined into one document for you, so that's all happening now. And last, you'll have the April and May thing, which is where we, you know, present this combined budget to you, and have public hearings, and hopefully vote it in, and that's the presentation, so.
Any comments or questions, Mr. Lay?
Couple of things that I got from your presentation. I think last night, the city council was saying that the money that gave to the school was the same as last year, and according to what I heard you saying, is they gave us $3 million short.
Yes, so, last year, it was 15.7 million dollars in cash, and it was decreased by 3 million, and I did confirm that with the city CFO. What, again, there's two things that, I don't know, I didn't watch the meeting last night, but this is what he could have meant. They have to spend that 3 million on the school, so even, they may not have cut us as far as an overall budget, because they're spending it in non-cash, but for cash, they cut the budget by $3 million. And, the other thing, the other point would be that they combined Chapter 70 and the city cash on one line, so if a city councillor was looking at the budget, it would actually look like a $19 million increase, and they would not show a decrease to the schools at all, but that's only because the $22 million of state aid offsets the 3 million in decreased city cash.
May I continue? So, according to Chapter 70, our, the money that the school should receive has been increasing, and the city portion should be also increasing every year, but the city would divide that into two parts. One is the cash, and the other one is in the form of a chargeback, is that right?
Yes.
So, in the past, the percentage of cash that the city gave to the school was around 40-something percent in the past, and every year, it has been decreasing and decreasing, and now it's down to almost 20%. So, when, when the city, I mean, when the state required the city to give more money, it seemed like we got less instead every year, so I don't know how, if you have an answer for that, I don't know, there is an explanation why, why we get cash, less cash every year when it should be increasing, and, so.
So, yes, you're right, there are two pools of money, the cash and the non-cash, so as the state continues to give us increases, instead, the city has decreased our cash, which does offset the increases we're seeing from the state. So, it, so, people could look and say, "Oh, well, you got 22 million extra dollars," but if the city decreased our cash by 3 million, now we have to take whatever we gained from the state to fund what was being funded by city cash in the past. One example I can give about the 45% to the 22%, you know, going down from 45% of required minimum contribution being cash, is that when I first started, the budget read 16 million dollars in city cash, and it was supposed to fund 10 million for transportation, adult ed, and then 5 million in other operations. So, it funded three different things, transportation, adult ed, and other operations. Now, the amount of cash coming in is 12.7, and our transportation, so our cash is going down, but transportation costs have gone up, transportation actually costs 12.7 ironically. So, in reality, we're getting just enough cash to cover the transportation, nothing else, so, so in answer to your question, yes, cash is definitely decreasing.
Anything else, Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. No, it's just astounding to see that, that the school department should have get more money, more cash, but instead, we get less and less, and I don't know if there is an explanation why that is so, and if we need to ask the city to give us the breakdown on how they come up with that, would be wonderful, but I would take your suggestion, Ms. Turner.
I don't have a suggestion, but I do want to make one clarification, just so that I'm fully transparent. When the city, when the city is required to increase their required minimum contribution, it does not state that it must be in cash. We assume it will be, we don't assume that we're going to get cut, but it does not specifically state that, so what we can do is reach out to DESI to see if there are any guidelines or rules on what is allowed, and to, or if there are any limitations on how much they can spend in any given area. I could do that, I could reach out and see what the, what guidance they have to provide for us.
So, it's not, just not fair that we get less and less money every year, that's my point, thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that this is going to be part of our ongoing negotiations with the city council and the school committee, working to collaborate, to do what's best for the city and our schools, and I would say that what's best for our schools and our children is also best for the city. I agree with Mr. Lay that we have these pots of money, you know, when we look at Chapter 70, and I think it's important to look at the history. So, for 25 years, we had the Ed Reform Act in 1993 that didn't move. It said, "This is how much you give," and during that time period, for 17 years, the city of Lowell did not meet its net school spending requirement. We are required to contribute a small amount, I mean, you could probably tell us off the top of your head what percentage of our overall budget, but let's say it's 85, comes from the state, just to use that number, and it's probably not correct, but. So, the way the city comes up with the percentage that the state tells them they have to, is one part is cash, as we're talking about, the 16 million, the 15 million, that's now dropped to 12.7. The other part is the maintenance of effort. What are they doing to help the schools with the buildings, and I think plowing, or whatever for our streets, things like that? So, they balanced it because they have this requirement that they're able to lower the cash contribution by putting more on the other side, a maintenance of effort, right? Is that fair? So, now the city can say to us, "Okay, so for 17 years, we didn't meet the minimum, but I believe now we're over the minimum requirement." Once you put those two pieces together, we are like over what the state is requiring as a minimum, but the cash piece has been reduced quite a bit, and I think that is where we have a problem, because we need that cash. But when you look at that the state has increased how much they're giving us, that's not just a random thing. That's over 25 years of not making a move, and looking at the formula of what does it cost to educate a student in Massachusetts? What does it cost to provide an education to a student who English is not their first language, or poverty, or home, all the challenges that we face as an urban district? That gets weighted into that additional money that's coming from the state. It's not meant to be, now the city doesn't have to give us as much. It's not the intention of the Chapter 70 increase. So, I think, from my perspective, I can see, I want to be a good partner with the city, but my expectation is, let's be fair about this, and let's do what's right for our kids. So, I'm hoping that we are going to continue to have these conversations with our colleagues on the city council, and that there's going to be some flexibility. As we've said tonight, we're going to help with some of our Esser money, because we know it's the right thing to do, so we want you to also step up and do the right thing. And I don't see reducing the cash contribution by 3 million is working in that direction. So, I do share my colleagues' concerns and think we have some work ahead of us. I'm still optimistic. I think it's an, as we've said before, it's an opportunity of a lifetime to make a real impact, and I'm hoping that my colleagues in government will be on both sides of the aisle, be helping to do that.
Ms. Turner?
I'm glad that you recognize that, because the Student Opportunity Act, what you just recognized is that the additional funds that we received were not that we got to raise. It was actually to help with all the increased ELL students. We got over 350 students extra. When there are rules that Ms. Desmond could share, that if they're scoring under a 3, they have to get 2 hours or more of, you know, ELL instruction per day, we don't have, we're not compliant if we don't increase the number of ELL teachers that we're providing. So, when we learned of the decrease, of course, it was a shock to us, because the increased amounts were specifically for those students that are neediest, and the money, it's just like what we're doing with you with Fair Student Funding, where we can show acad, I mean, actual dollar signs that equate to the number of students in each category. That's exactly how the state provides us with the amount they're giving us, so we can see exactly why they gave us 22 million dollars, so when 3 million of it goes away right away, it was very impactful to us. But I do also want to say that I, too, share your interest in what maintenance of effort categories have been spent historically, and I did, I took all of the maintenance of effort packages, which are this, you know, this is very big, and I asked one of my staff members to help me put it onto a simple spreadsheet, so we could see year by year what categories have gone up. I have not been able to review it yet, it was just done, but I could put that in my next presentation so that you can see that information.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Also, to add on to the question and concern by Committee Member Doherty, I did have an opportunity to speak and to share with the Urban Superintendents Network. Unfortunately, as I understand it, we're the only city so far that has chosen to take the opportunity of the Student Opportunity Act to reduce the cash appropriation to the school district at this current moment, that's the report I'm getting back. At the same time, many cities are actually looking at chargebacks for their transportation. It's handled on the city or municipal side, and then covered as a chargeback, typically done that way because transportation covers charter schools, covers private schools, covers others. The city, the school district here, the school committee takes that responsibility, but if you, if that were a chargeback here, as it is in many cities, you would be looking at a $0 cash appropriation from the city in the current year, because the cash appropriation is basically for this year, as it's currently defined by the city, is a pass-through that you will be obligated to spend on transportation within this current-year budget. So, everything within your current-year budget is chargebacks, once you account for transportation as it currently looks. When I came to the district, there was a motion two months before I was hired, requesting that we set a minimum floor, it was a motion put forward by Committee Member Jerry Nutter, that we establish a minimum floor with the committee at 42%. Since the committee's made that request, it's consistently gone down, not gone up. You were at 35% that particular year, you're now down around 22% currently. That places us below the city of Worcester, that we typically are above in terms of cash appropriation. I believe that Superintendent quoted for me 23% as their cash appropriation. Now, there's high variability, because there is no definition as to what the chargeback should be, so it's difficult to compare city to city, which is what, in terms of the chargebacks and the appropriation, which is why we look at cash appropriation separate from the chargebacks, as Ms. Turner mentioned. These are thick documents in terms of what those chargebacks are, so you will find, as you talk to your committee colleagues across the state, it's very difficult to look apples-to-apples with the chargeback. So, I would recommend, as you work with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and that executive director will be here tomorrow night, actually, that you look at the cash appropriation if you're looking to compare. What percentage of net school spending is met through cash appropriation, as you talk to your elected colleagues and committees across the Commonwealth? And as I get more information, I'll certainly share with you as well. Every city is going through their budgets at the same time that you are, so these are very fluid numbers, and my hope would be the same as yours, as yours committee members. I would hope that this is, these are preliminary numbers, and that through discussion, excuse me, through discussion, that we get some revised numbers going forward.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you so much, Ms. Turner, for that streamlined and insightful budget report. We appreciate that. We now go to the 9.2, the motion response section. We do have six motion responses, starting with 9.2.1, response to motion 3, CEO of 2222 by Mr. Dakota regarding neck guards, helmets, and safety equipment. Any comments on that particular response, Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that was a joint motion with me and Mr. Dakota, and thank you for, Superintendent, thank you for a report that, that our athletes at the high school are doing okay, they get everything, every equipment that's needed, and that neck guard is not required, so, thank you.
No other comment? We go to 9.2.2, response to motion 17 and 07, COO of March 1621, and 11922 by Ms. Mon, regarding Aramark Reporting Portal. Any comment, Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much, Ms. Doherty, yes. You know, I would just like to, A, say thank you both to the administration and to our contractors at Aramark. I really appreciate getting the report that allowed us to see exactly what concerns were being raised by students and by parents. I personally would like to apologize to the student who got a bad carrot. I'm not sure what a bad carrot really is, but, okay, hey, it seems like a judgment call, but, but I do think that this is exactly the kind of response I was certainly hoping for in my two motions, that we would be able to see, you know, actual concerns being raised, and then actual responses that were made to these individuals. So, I really appreciate it, and I would only kind of double down to say to our school communities that this is here, and it will only be effective if you use it. So, for students and for parents, you know, to take advantage of this on the website, I know we have made some additional requests to kind of bring it a little more forward on the website, and trying to make sure that it's as accessible as possible. I appreciate all efforts in that regard, and I think that, you know, again, I appreciate the effort that went into implementing this in a, in a very quick way, and looking forward to seeing this report kind of develop over time. Thank you.
Thank you. 9.2.3 is relevant to an unanswered motion earlier, it's a response to motion 1, CAO of 12121 by Ms. Doherty regarding a third-party audit around mental health services to our students. Any more comment, Ms. Doherty? You're good with that? We now go to 9.2.4, response to motion 6, CEEO of 31621 by Mr. Lay regarding translation services and FY '23 budget. Any comment, Mr. Lay?
A little bit. I guess, when I read this report, I still have many questions. I wish I reached out to you, Superintendent, and talked about it earlier, but I, I guess I didn't understand, like, there are still some parents still call me and say that the translation, meaning the one that written in paper, sent home, was not done correctly. I don't know if that was done from the central office, or it was from school base, I'm not sure, but they still complain that the translation was gibberish, they don't even understand, couldn't make out what the word means. So, so I guess maybe it's from Google Translation, something like that. So, I guess, I'm wondering, are we, do we have contract with local translating services that can help us, or are we dealing with some big company from Boston?
Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Mayor, School Committee Member Lay, we, for the most part, use the services of our translation company, so if you are finding that, that some of the translations, you're probably referring to Kumai Translation, which uses a different writing system, script, we definitely want to be made aware of that, because our to be made aware of that because our bilingual family liaison can also, you know, double-check those translations and report back to the company what we're seeing. In some cases, such as newsletters, schools or offices may be using a Google Translate. If you look in the, in the presentation, there are certain translations that must, must be, that must be created by a formally trained translator. And then there are other informations such as, as non-high-stakes school events or newsletters that don't have to be translated by a formal interpreter. But either way, we want to, we want to know the quality of the translations that are going out. So anything you can, you can raise back, bring back to us, we'll check.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. So I have a stupid question then. If, if we have so many resources here in Lowell, especially for Kumai Translation and Kumai Interpreter, is there any way we can use them as the resource instead of, instead of calling somebody else, somewhere else, you know? Can we use our local translating services? Would that be something complicated to do?
So, Mr. Lee, for formal translations or, or for special education services, we do need to use certified translators and interpreters. So that's something that we, we would look for. We have trained a couple of our staff. They've received training from, I think, UMass Amherst Translation and Interpretation Center. But there is a difference between someone who, who speaks the language fluently and someone who's actually trained. And especially as relates to special education services also knowing the vocabulary, the terminology of the field.
Any other comment?
Just a, just a little more question. I'm so sorry, I don't want to go further. Just more question, Ms. Phillips. So are those staff members in the school system that are trained by the UMass system? And my, my, my understanding is, you know, Kumai Translation is a little bit tricky. It's not like translating from Spanish to, I think Spanish to English is a little bit easier. But for Kumai Translation, I think you need to have a little bit deep understanding of the Kumai language actually to understand the translation. So that's my concern. Thank you.
No other comment? We go to 9.2.5, response to motion 16, C O O of 31621 by Ms. Thompson regarding equitable and diverse hiring processes. Any comment, Ms. Thompson?
I would like to thank Ms. Phillips for this really in-depth report. I am glad that it's been noted that there's an, there's something missing from, you know, the timeframe because that's really, really important. Because obviously, if you are the victim of bullying or discrimination or racism or something to that effect, things need to be done in a time-sensitive kind of, a quick manner. So the fact that that's not being, that's not accessible in the database, but you're looking to figure out how you can do that, I really appreciate. And I, I think our constituents and our students will appreciate that. So that's all. Thank you very much.
All the comments will go to 9.2.6, response to motions five, C E E O of 2221 by Ms. Thompson regarding monthly incident reports relative to bullying, discrimination, and racism. Any comment, Ms. Thompson?
No, I'm all set.
Thank you. That was the last motion response. We did pretty good. Now need a motion to accept reports of the Superintendent, 9.1 through 9.2.6, as report of progress by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Chuen. Ms. Dougherty, you have a comment?
Sorry, I just had a question, a comment about the, the equitable and diverse hiring processes. I got kind of caught up on the, the other one.
Oh, sure. You have a comment on the last?
Just in terms of recruitment and what we're doing around recruitment. I had an email and I think it was sent to everybody, but I know you guys aren't all getting your school committee email through that, those addresses. So I had mentioned to this teacher that I would share it. I think we've been talking for years about recruitment issues in education and certainly we've reached a new level of concern and urgency with the pandemic. And I think that piggybacks on our efforts to try to increase the diversity of our, our staff. So one of the things we had done is we brought back this club at the high school called Future Educators of America Club. And that's really trying to get our current students excited and thinking about education as a career path. Come back and teach at your school, you know, be part of the future of Lowell. And I know we have Flawellians here in the room who graduated Lowell High School and all that. So this teacher had written out, written to us saying, we should be recruiting through our alumni network. And I'm not sure if we are doing that enough or could we be increasing that? And, and looking at what's being done at the high school in terms of these Future Educators of America Club. And the other piece that was pointed out is if we are recruiting in areas like Georgia and Texas, and I could tell you from my own experience, I worked for a recruiting company for nine years, it's really difficult to get somebody from the South to move up here. It's really difficult to get people to move away from, you know, their state or their nearby community. And I, I'm not sure that's the biggest bang for our buck. I would, I was wondering if we could maybe get some information about, like, where, how our recruit, recruitment efforts, what is the strategy? I know we put some money towards that, but to get a better sense that we're not spending precious dollars going to, let's say, Georgia, nothing against Georgia, but if we're going to go out of state to at least stay in New England, what about Philadelphia? What about, you know? So I just wanted to share those comments that I, that came to us through the email. And I see we have another additional response to that. Thank you.
We'll go to Ms. Thompson, Mr. Lee, and then Ms. Chuen.
Ms. Thompson? So in having spoken to the H R department about their recruitment efforts, because this is obviously a concern of mine, the reality of it is, we, we can't keep pulling from a pool that doesn't have any more swimmers in it. So I think that we are trying to get New England, it's the base of who we're trying to get. But the reality of it is, is you also have to recognize that there are specific states that where education is still being respected in the ways that it used to be. And those are, and Texas is a huge state for education, believe it or not. And also in Georgia and North Carolina are also really states that have lots of opportunity. I also think that if we're looking for diverse candidates, we need to be thinking about potentially using H B C Us, which are historically black colleges and universities for anybody who doesn't know what that acronym is. So, you know, utilizing those opportunities. But I do agree with going to the Fitchburg States and the Salem States and, and utilizing them as well. I just think that we have to have a multi-pronged approach to, to our thing. But yes, I think there's, there's something to be said. I wouldn't want to necessarily leave the warmth and come up here, I get it. But some people are excited about a new adventure and I think that if we compose that as well as the other things that they do get, so.
Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. A couple of years ago, we had a program in the summertime that we tapped into the community in Lowell, right here in Lowell, to encourage them to take M T L exams and become teachers. And I thought that program was very successful. And we, I feel that we have resources right here in Lowell. Many of them, many of us residents here have a career change. They won't have a career change, they have a bachelor degree already and somehow they never know, they don't know how to become teachers. And I feel that that is the priority, I would think, that we want to tap into the local people, Lawrence, Boston, I mean, yeah, Boston, Lowell, Haverhill, Methuen. We have a bunch of community around us that are very diverse. And I feel that if we have some program that entice them to, to become teachers and work in Lowell, I think that might be cheaper and maybe more efficient. And they don't have to move very far. They could stay where they are and come to work in Lowell. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I appreciate the committee's comments. We're going to be in a process here of recruitment where we can leave no stone unturned. This is going to be an incredible period of recruitment for us. That's going to require us to strategically outreach to not only our local community and the Commonwealth as a whole, but we're going to have to reach outside of the state also. The staffing shortages that are affecting every industry are affecting education even more so. And there are going to be districts, there are going to be states, there are going to be communities that are not going to fill every position that they have. Our job, I think, together collectively here in this room and all stakeholders throughout Lowell is going to be to make sure that those staffing shortages don't affect our children here locally. And that's going to require us to, all of these strategies that have been mentioned by the committee that have been done previously, to continue those strategies. And then also, as Committee Member Thompson mentioned, to reach outside of what might be our natural comfort zone to other states, to other communities. And when we can strategically focus in on those areas that allow us to recruit high-quality candidates that also represent our diverse populations here, that might not represent the diverse, the populations that are coming through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a whole, but represent Lowell specifically, we can sometimes reach out to other states, H B C Us being one, but other, other communities, other colleges, other universities that we might not have typically engaged within recruitment. This is our, this is a time now where we've identified that strategically, but it's also a time now of where it's essential for us to do that. Because right now, the data that we are being presented is that of the federal S R dollars coming into education, which amount to the billions and billions of dollars, 25% of those dollars nationwide are expected to be translated into positions. Education overall is expected to receive 600,000 fewer entrants into the education field. And on top of that, 50% nationwide of educators currently have stated that they are either planning to leave the profession now or in the not-too-distant future. That creates a staffing shortage that you've historically heard about in education. But now because of this environment that's created through the global health crisis, it becomes significantly more glaring within education. So I will tell the committee that all of these ideas are excellent ideas. We're going to take all of these ideas in, but it's not going to be an either or, it's going to be a both and. And we're going to make sure that we can recruit the best candidates. And as a personal note, I can tell you, having been someone that's moved around communities, sometimes your first interaction is not the job you take then, but you remember that later on. That's a community you were introduced to. And when you make a decision to move, that, you're reminded of that introduction. So if we have the opportunity to engage a candidate this year in Georgia, in Texas, wherever else our team has identified, we may not recruit them this year, but they'll remember Lowell. And now they know Lowell, Massachusetts. And each time they see it on a map, they hear the name, they've got something to connect to. And we may actually be able to engage that candidate later on. So I do believe that this is going to be a continuous conversation for us. I would hope that every, every school district up here, as well as across the country, is engaging in the same conversation. But I think I've told this community every time through our budget discussions, I love every child. I happen to love Lowell's children more. So we're going to make sure that we reach a competitive edge and a competitive advantage so that we can staff all of our classrooms. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Chuen?
Yes, I would like to piggyback off Committee Member Dougherty mentioning about starting our kids young. So Committee Member Dominic Lee and I, we were actively involved, well, Mr. Lee actually was the chairman for that process. But, so with Lowell High School, when, you know, we do the Canadian American Scholarship Funds to help our students, encouraging, that one of the criteria is making sure that our students that accept, the participants, the recipients that are receiving the funds are students who are willing to go into education. So that's one of the incentives in encouraging our students who are really not sure where their career path would lead them, but knowing that this is a little incentive to help them further on in their education is, one of the top priority and criteria is that encouraging them to go pursue a career in education. So that's what Committee Member Dominic and myself have been working on and we've raised some funds to encourage that. Just not say that it's just for the Canadian American. We see that the criteria fit and that's just encouraging our generation, our younger generation to pursue a career in education. Thank you.
Ms. Mon? You still haven't, you all set? Any, anyone else? Seeing no more hands, we now move to accept the reports of report progress. Motion by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Chuen. All the favors, the eye, pause, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carried. We now go to 9.3, home education. Need a motion to approve by Ms. Dougherty, second by Mr. Lee. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chuen? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
There's a few convention and conference requests. The Butler School Overnight Field Trip Request, Boston, Massachusetts. Lowell High School's Out-of-State Overnight Travel Request, Dallas, Texas. Lowell High School Out-of-State and Overnight Travel Request, Wilmington, Delaware. Out-of-State Overnight Travel Request, Human Resources Recruitment. Need a motion to, a motion by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Thompson. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson? Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chuen? Ms. Del Rossi? Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Eleven, professional personnel. 11.1, the members of the Lowell School Administrators Association hereby request to donate 14 sick leave days to Katie McGann, Butler School Social Worker. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Chuen. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chuen? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Last item on the agenda, 11.2, the members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate 15 sick leave days to Gerson Collin, Lowell High School teacher. Need a motion to approve by Ms. Mon, second by Mr. Lee. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chuen? Mr., Mr. Rossi? Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Any announcement? Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. If I could take a point of personal privilege, I just wanted to reiterate to my colleagues here and to the viewing public that tomorrow night will be the meeting of the Personnel and Labor Relations Subcommittee where we will be welcoming Glenn Kuchar from the Mass Association of School Committees, who will be providing a training to the, the committee members on the evaluation system. I just want to recommend certainly to all my colleagues here that you join us for that, for that training as we're entering into the evaluation process for the Superintendent. But I'd also reiterate that, that for the community, understanding how this process works can be really instructive. And I'd certainly recommend, maybe if you don't want to come down, maybe you watch us on TV. So it's at 5:30, is that right? 5:30? I'm asking, okay, thank you. So 5:30 here in the council chambers. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Another announcement? Need a motion to adjourn, to adjourn by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Dougherty. Ms. Thompson, did you want to, you have an announcement? Did you raise your hand? Okay. Second, motion is approved.